Well, good afternoon, everyone. I am going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll start like we always do with introductions. And I am going to ask, we'll start with the clerk. Obviously, we'll go around the dais and go with the executive team, but anyone who is a part of staff on both sides of the room, I'd like you to introduce yourselves. So we will start with our clerk.
Good afternoon. I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon. I am Alyssa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell, elected by the people of District Six.
Good afternoon. Lee Altman, County Commissioner, Serving at Large. And I also have the privilege of serving as Vice Chair.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mark Jerrell, been elected by the people of District Four, also serving as Chair.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin, serving you as your County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon. I am Mecklenburg County Commissioner Elaine Powell. I represent Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, North Charlotte. And I just got off the phone for the part of Lake Norman that I represent. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, and I represent you at large.
Good afternoon, Tyrone Wade County Attorney.
Good afternoon, Dina D'Orio, Mecklenburg County Manager.
Good afternoon, Anthony Trotman, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Mike Bryant, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager and Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon, Mike Williams, Deputy Director.
I'm Alyssa Easton, Public Information Director.
I'm Leslie Rhodes, Air Quality Director for Mecklenburg County.
Shawna Ronna, Deputy Director, Economic Development.
Jamelia Davis, Economic Development.
Roger Johnson, Economic Development Director, Mecklenburg County.
Elise Hamilton Childress, Prevention and Intervention Services Division Director, Community Support Services.
Good afternoon, Delisa Talbert, Community Resource Center Division Director.
Good afternoon, Yolanda Griffin, Director for Department of Community Resources.
Good afternoon, Lizeth Nemitz, Intergovernmental Affairs Manager.
Katie Deel, Public Information Director.
Leslie Rhodes, that's all we've got here.
Leslie Rhodes.
Okay, all right. All right, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good afternoon and welcome again, everyone. Just want to do a little bit of housekeeping. The first thing, Commissioners, you have a menu in front of you. Please take care of the, please circle the item that you would like and give it to the clerk before we leave the meeting, please. And we are going to ask Commissioner Dunlap to introduce himself.
Well, I'm George Dunlap.
Right on time. Thank you. At this time, what we'll do is turn it over to the manager to tee us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items under our agenda today. The first is an update on the Innovation District Development. And I think now we'll turn it over to Colin.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thanks for having us today. So Colin Lane, I'm Senior Vice President for Atrium Health, Advocate Health, responsible for the buildout of the Pearl. And then with me, I have Hillary Crittenden, who's my partner in the project and also running district operations for the Pearl, as well as a lot of the jobs, talent pipeline, school alignment, early college STEM school type work that's going on. And she'll talk about that in a little bit. And we actually have a little show and tell for everybody here with the STEM kits. She'll get into that in a little bit. But it's a neat thing that we're doing with CMS schools. And I think, Dina, I have, what, 15 minutes or so? Okay. So, good afternoon. Thanks again for having us today. This is a, we've been doing probably two updates that we've been sending the county every year for documentation about where we are in the project. And I do think that, you know, this is an exciting moment of where we are in the project. We actually opened in June with the school starting in July, and I'll get into a little bit in a minute. But I do believe that together, you know, with the county and the city, that this really has established a model for what a public-private partnership really should look like. We wouldn't be here in this partnership without the team here at the table. And I think it's important to congratulate you all, as well as city leadership, and really having the foresight to invest in this project and create really life-changing education and employment opportunities for our community and transform the business and industrial landscape for Charlotte and the Mecklenburg County and establish this community as a life sciences, medical device, and health sciences leader. So, a few just key objectives. I think everybody gets focused on if you drive by, you see a building. But there's so much more going on than that. And I wanted to just kind of take a moment to refresh everybody and ground us in what exactly we're trying to achieve in the project and all the work that's been going on. So first objective was really to bring the first four-year medical school to Charlotte, along with supporting allied health programs. Second was anchor the Innovation District in research and academics. So that actually helped enable the project. We developed a talent pipeline in the community to align with CMS and create education and employment opportunities for all. We also had a key objective to diversify the industry base in Charlotte beyond financial services and advanced manufacturing and attract health sciences companies to invest in this market. And then lastly, building an ecosystem that attracts and fosters innovation and entrepreneurship. So as part of this kind of journey together, it's important to outline like where we are today. And I like to use the airplane analogy because it's, everybody travels and probably travels frequently. So if we were in airport, if we were going on a trip to a destination, where we are today is, is our airplane is almost built. It's in the hangar. And we're almost, we will get to the runway and take off here this summer. But there's still much to be done. So a little background on what we're building, so what exactly this thing represents, before we start getting into kind of numbers and facts and figures. You know, first, it's two buildings is the first phase, Phase 1A, as well as a tremendous amount of infrastructure across 20 acres. Those two buildings comprise of 680,000 square feet of academic research and industry space and the first of its kind in the market. It's the largest lead zero-carbon project of scale in the Carolinas. There's 30,000 square feet of the first rentable wet lab, dry lab, and research office space in the market to facilitate smaller incubators, life sciences, health sciences startups, and small companies and individuals to enter the market, which hasn't ever existed before. So we're really starting the flywheel for getting, for building this. We also have the Wake Forest School of Medicine with the first class of 48 starting July 7. And that, those 48 students are already on the ground and accepted and about to start. That's just the first class of four. That program will actually grow, and I think the target's 80 to 100 students per class. There's also the College of, Carolina's College of Health Sciences Allied Health. That's nursing, lab tech, rad tech, pharmacy tech, certificate training programs, as well as CRNAs, almost 800 students and faculty starting in August. We have IRCAD North America, a tenant that's taken four floors, 120,000 square feet, in the research building. That's the premier surgical training, product development, product optimization platform for the device industry, the only one in North America, and has attracted investment in our community of hundreds of millions of dollars, bringing thousands of doctors to Charlotte annually to train. There's a Fortune 500 health tech tenant who's signed a lease to bring a hub in Charlotte and took two floors of the research building. We cannot announce that yet. We are still under embargo. They will announce close to the opening. But they have already built out their space. Total projected labor hours for the project, 1.8 million labor hours, almost a third of those provided by diverse businesses locally in the community. A STEM school and early college program that Hillary will get into align with CMS, so Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, from fifth grade and above to create educational and employment pathways from CMS schools and directly to industry and other education opportunities. So before I start getting into the TIG document, I just wanted to take, just outline the three kind of major takeaways. First, we believe this is a model for a P3 success story, public-private partnership, and we should celebrate where we are at this point. Second, we've delivered in short order the physical capacity of almost 700,000 square feet. So we've built the buildings. We've filled them pretty much, 100% of the education building is full, and 70% of the research building is already full. That means there's only 90,000 feet left of the almost 680,000 feet that's not occupied yet. And that we've filled them with education, industry, and programs. And then third, we've developed an education and talent pipeline to begin driving these employment opportunities for the community, but also to create the talent required to attract industry to the market. So with that, I'm going to get into a few of the TIG commitments. There, we actually have an updated slide that I think we provided, but we might have been a little late on the most recent. This is one from the end of the year. But we've effectively finished the storm culvert. We've actually started to pay. The front entrance is almost fully complete. The McDowell Street returns to normal traffic later, later this month. Jacob's Ladder Plaza Hardscape is fully complete. The tree planting is in process. We will complete the Purposeful Walk here in spring. I think that's April, May, which will be kicking that off in the summer. And then that's also had significant alignment and leadership from, via the Purposeful Walk Steering Committee. We'll have a dedication for the Purposeful Walk planned in June of 2025. Some more information to come there. We're in advanced discussions with, sorry, public private, public parking deck A, final inspections are complete. Space is intended for use here shortly. On the sustainability side, we're on track to achieve the LEED certification. Pearl Phase 1A represents, again, the largest zero-carbon development in the community, and really in the Carolinas, if not the Southeast entirely. On the project participation side, as I mentioned, almost a third, 28% MWSBE percent of total costs were across the entire project, vertical builds, infrastructure. And of that, about 24% is awarded for just the infrastructure project alone. There's monthly reporting ongoing with CBI. We have 60-plus MWSBE forums that have been, firms that have been awarded over $110 million. 46 workforce development events to date, over 5,000 construction jobs. There are roughly about 700 construction workers on that site in any given day. We peaked at about 760 at the end of last year. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Hillary, and she's going to talk about some of the other community engagement opportunities.
Thanks. So Colin mentioned a little bit about the wet lab space and the opportunity that that creates for the market in terms of diversifying the real estate opportunity. It also is exciting from an economic development perspective because it can serve to bring researchers, startups, as well as serve as a landing pad for businesses that are considering Charlotte. Folks can come in and they can rent a single bench, a small office, or up to 10,000 square feet for anywhere from a month to 36 months. So a great opportunity, turnkey, move-in-ready space. That'll open in the fall. We have announced a new partnership with another med tech company around health equity. That work has been built on success that's already happened with our Single Heart and Vascular Center, and we're moving that forward. Charlotte's one of only two markets that the company has chosen to really go deep in. So we're really excited to see where that work will lead. And we completed our commitment to the Charlotte Small Business Growth Fund. Keneal Coltman and I sit on that advisory group along with others in the community. And we're looking actively for opportunities to not only have startups, small businesses around the community apply for those loans, but ideally those that we work with and have had success working with through this project and other development work in Charlotte. Really exciting to share with you the work that's been happening from a talent pipeline development perspective. You guys have in front of you some STEM kits. Those were developed in partnership with Abby Olakehe, who runs a company called Smart Girls HQ out of the portal at UNC Charlotte. She's a really fantastic entrepreneur, runs a growing business. And we collaborated with her in an effort to try to bring STEM learning to classrooms that's related to the Pearl before we had our actual lab built on campus. So the curriculum that we've built with Abby and her team will actually make its way into the physical Pearl campus in September when we welcome students from a number of different CMS schools onto campus on a weekly basis to experience STEM learning that's aligned to the research that we are, that we're driving forth on the Pearl. So this particular kit is around sustainability. We've developed a sort of general innovation kit. We have one that's coming out around medical robotics at the end of this month. And thus far, these kits, via teachers that are in our professional development program, have been distributed to over 1,000 students and 2,000 kits to date. So really, this is a sort of a snapshot of the way that we want to drive impact with students once we open our doors in our STEM lab at the Pearl. And an exciting way to get our younger learners, fifth through eighth grade, excited about STEM pathways. Since we met and probably since our last update in September, we've made significant progress with the early college program, which is very exciting. So we have almost all of our approvals to move forward with that. We will be bringing about 100 students who are currently at Hawthorne Health Sciences Academy into our early college program. We are aligning their work to four different tracks that connect very heavily to job demand, both at Atrium Health and across the region. Those tracks are nursing, nursing, surgical tech, healthcare simulation, and neurodiagnostics. And we actually have another high school, Phillipo Berry, that's very excited about this. So we're working to advance another track with that school as well. Phillipo Berry's been a great partner with us to date. We've done some really interesting work with their advanced computer science students around the history of Brooklyn. They presented to a number of folks, including Commissioner Griffin, got to see some of their work earlier this fall. We have another cohort that's participating in that computer science course now with the support of the Dottie Rose Foundation and great partners at CMS. So a lot of exciting work happening in that space. We have a new internship program that we have advanced with CPCC around their biomedical equipment technology training program. That's a new program for them that they're looking to grow. And we're actually serving sort of more as like the bridge and the convener in that work, working with some of the med tech partners that Colin referenced and trying to get these certificate students placed into these jobs that these companies are coming to town and trying to fill. The other thing that I wanted to share an update on was the Community Advisory Council. That council was established last January. We've actually had five meetings to date. We just met last week. We have a really engaged group of community leaders who participate and meet with us every few months and serve as sort of advisors to us in the interim and a connection to the community. We're currently electing a youth at-large seat to add to that council, which we're excited about. And then the last thing that I wanted to just add was that we'll be growing some of the engagement activities over the course of the summer around both the STEM work and the Purposeful Walk. If you all remember, maybe a bit of the concepting around the Purposeful Walk, that's really an outdoor architectural walk that connects very strongly to the history of Brooklyn. We've had a steering committee from the community that's been working with us from the beginning. That includes a mix of folks who grew up in Brooklyn or had families or businesses in Brooklyn, as well as historians from Johnson C. Smith, the Levine Center, the Gant Center, and UNC Charlotte participating in that work. So we'll have a dedication of that walk in early June. There's another slide, and I think I actually spoke to all the points, but that's in your deck, that shares just a little bit more about the STEM lab and the early college, so that you guys have some of those. I know I was rattling off some numbers there. Colin, anything else you want to cover? Or just open it for questions to the group?
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. Let me open it up to questions. I suspect, team, we'll probably go two rounds on this. Madam Clerk, we're going to start with three minutes each Commissioner, and we'll have a hard stop. I'm going to start with, lead us off will be Commissioner Altman. And Commissioner Powell, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you so much to the entire Atrium team for being here. Three minutes is short, so I'm going to talk fast and hope that you'll respond also quickly. What I'm interested in, first of all, I appreciate the global update, but specifically the representations that Atrium made to the public and to the Board of County Commissioners when we agreed to the TIG. I feel that it's our obligation to ensure there's a one-to-one ratio with those promises and commitments and what ultimately gets delivered because that's the kind of accountability that we owe to taxpayers. And so that's really what's underneath all of my questions. I would like offline for you, if you could please, provide more detail around the off-site workforce housing and onsite workforce housing. There's really nothing here in terms of detail. I don't know the timeframes or what's really underway. But I don't want you to take time to explain it now, if you don't mind. Number two, I would like, if possible, if you could follow up with information on who's on the advisory community and what specific steps there they've undertaken to ensure community alignment with the work in the Innovation District. I don't know if that's via the minutes or goal setting they've made, but I would love to have that. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll send you that separate.
Okay, thank you. But pivoting to what I really wanted to focus on, which is district jobs. You know, there was an original goal, one in four health jobs would not require a bachelor's degree and would pay 66% more than the average rolls. And that was really a very important factor for me in supporting this. And so I would like to know, first of all, when is the campus going to actually open?
So the schools are open July 7. And I can't remember the College of Health Sciences, it's August something.
August 25.
Okay. So given the proximity of August to March 11, I'd Okay, so given the proximity of August to March 11th, I'd like to know, well, first of all, how many jobs do you anticipate opening? And what are the categories, how many, and the salaries that you anticipate?
We probably need to do a separate review of the Economic Impact Report, so that's direct, indirect, and induced jobs.
Okay.
That's what all those represented. So the idea is there's a multiplier effect of these jobs, that there are other jobs that support them in the community, plus the ongoing spend generates additional jobs.
Understood. So I appreciate that you might not have all that today, but I feel there's a real urgency because, given how soon it is to August, I would like to next know what strategy you have in place for marketing and reaching people and harder to access areas where they're, you know, where we've been talking all along about your efforts to sync up people who need work with this opportunity. So can you also talk about the strategy?
Yep, there, we'll, maybe we do a separate one, or unless, or you want to speak to, I've got the jobs panel report up there.
Yeah.
Will you come to the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you're.
Is yours on mute?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so from a strategic perspective, a number of the programs represented on this screen are programs that Atrium's been historically building over years and that were growing. We've leveraged relationships in the community to build a lot of these. Regarding the Carolina's College of Health Sciences and their recruitment efforts separately, I'd probably have to just get them to weigh in on that. I can say for the work that we've been doing around the early college and talent pipelining work, that we have focused on Title I schools and the ability to give those students pathways into jobs, and also been connecting closely with Central Piedmont on certification courses where they align with industry, but they don't have pathways for placement, or they see an opportunity for sort of growing programs if we can bring that job demand to the table. So there's been a lot of intentionality around those partnerships, but from a CCHS recruiting perspective, I probably need to talk to somebody internally.
All right, well, my time's up, but I do want, if you can, provide that job information and the actual strategy that you're going to be rolling out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we'll be coming back for round two.
Do you want me to speak at all about that, or do you want me to?
If you have some, if you want to add something, sure.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this is a 10-year play. So this was, the whole jobs report is an economic impact report that was direct, indirect, and induced jobs based on the investment and the build-out of the building. So the first phase, 600,000 feet, we programmed the whole district at 4 million feet. So we are just beginning. The key ingredients was education and this infrastructure to begin with. So there won't be 5,000 jobs that start on day one. There never were going to be. It's a, we're building the pipeline for it that will attract talent, and then there will downstream be jobs, and then every dollar that we're spending and they're spending in the community. So for instance, 2,000 doctors will come to IRCAD. They're all, that's medical tourism. They're all generating dollars, et cetera. So it's the same kind of concept in any of the entertainment district or whatever. Happy to go back through that. It probably requires a little more technical conversation about it, like going through, like what the assumptions are and all that. Happy to do that. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure I covered that base.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I would like all the answers that Commissioner Altman asked for. And I guess the first way I want to start is, I love the people, the caregivers, that work at Atrium. So when I ask questions, it's not related to caregivers, because they're awesome. And I really appreciate Commissioner Altman's first statement, because we have to, in many other counties, if you read about it, TIGs go unchecked. Government leaders just say, "Okay," and they go unchecked. That's not going to happen in Mecklenburg County. Like, we need to hold the people who get the TIGs accountable, especially for such a profitable nonprofit. I have some concerns about this, and this is from life experience. We got a lot of complaints when I was on the Park Commission about the area around Atrium, Maine, where it was considered green space, but people went there to smoke. And so I don't know if you're going to have, if it's going to be non-smoking, but it seems to, these tight little green spaces typically end up with lots of people smoking, and so it's not pleasant. And I don't know how you're going to address that. And on the environmental sustainability piece, I would like a more detailed, not just buildings, but, you know, what are you doing for sustainability all the way around? Because I represent Cornelius, and I've gotten complaints about the loss of tree canopy on that campus. And so I don't know, I don't know what your focus is on this sustainability. So if you could send that, you know, like gather up anything that you've done, if there is anything, and let me know in a report. And that's all I have for right now.
Colin, you want to? So the mile stretch between East Boulevard and Morehead, we spent $38 million improving that greenway. We also worked in a partnership with the county and the city around the burying the lines and the water and sewer along that. So there's a significant improvement once that opens to that area that's on the CMC campus. The CMC campus right now is undergoing a $1.5 billion investment in this community. We've got probably 1,600 workers on there. We're adding a significant amount of capacity and jobs to this market. We actually currently have actively, under construction, $3 billion of investment in Mecklenburg County. So as it relates to jobs and investment and going long on Mecklenburg County, we're really long, so.
The bell is not for you.
Okay. Sustainability, happy to speak to that. Obviously, we had to take trees down to build the hospital there in that county. That represents a 60-plus-bed hospital. That'll create 400 jobs for Cornelius directly, and then indirectly about 1,600 jobs.
So we are, you know, like this board cares about balance, and I didn't get a chance to go see the loss of tree canopy, but I got significant complaints about that it was unnecessary, so. And we're not talking about that area, but I just think it's an important focus. You know, all the other things are really important, but we can't forget the sustainability piece. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just picking up on the sustainability piece real quick, since you just mentioned that. I remember in the original presentation, it was stated that Atrium has a path to be carbon neutral by 2025, and lo and behold, we are now in 2025, because that was 2021. I mean, the future got here. So I'm just wondering how you guys are doing on that goal, but I'm not going to take time to let you answer. So please answer after the bell goes off. I also wanted to say I really appreciate the education and the talent pipeline work that you guys are doing. I really love seeing how you guys are working with CMS, how you guys are, you know, fulfilling that vision. I think it's super exciting, and I really appreciate that aspect. I also would like to know about, you mentioned the construction workers. I really want to know if you guys were able to use the registered apprenticeships that we had been asking for back in 2021, and if those came to be. But my main focus is, you know, really it's on the TIG. And the, you know, I'm sure you guys are aware of the Charlotte Ledger article a couple of weeks ago that came out and talked about, you know, how Atrium has $6 billion in offshore accounts and things like that. This project is super complex in that we know there's the Wexford piece, which is supposedly, I think, 80% of the TIG, and then there's the Atrium piece. And so part of my concern is the, we've sort of double, you know, called double-dipping, or, you know, trying to have a way to wiggle out of having to pay taxes, you know, property taxes and sales taxes. And so I'm really interested to know how we can track the, like, I've been looking at the modeling that was done, the REMI models from back in 2021 with the impact analysis, you know, on, you know, not only property tax but sales tax. And so with the loopholes, with Atrium being a hospital authority, you know, and I just think that's so complex, and I would really like if we can have some transparency and some visibility around, you know, which buildings are taxed, which ones are not taxed, which ones are part of the TIG, which ones are not part of those taxes that are being rebated, or I guess that's not the right term, but you know what I'm talking about. I really, really want us to be able to confidently say, this is part of the TIG, this is part, like, I think at the time we were told there would be $17 million in sales tax over the period, but then I'm reading about, well, Atrium just got an $8 million check of, you know, Mecklenburg County taxes rebated. So these things are super complex, and I really would love some visibility into that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yep, I should probably call Roger up to talk about it. The TIG is definitely complicated. The way, the TIG is a TIG district, so it's very delineated line. And what it is, is the investment that we make, we're on a 90% TIG, which means that we get 90 cents back up to 70, up to the 60 million, but you make 10% on that, and once we get paid, then you're getting 100% of all of the increase in the revenue basis that is there. So technically, you're getting a 10% return on the dollar, on every, on all the dollars that we're spending at first, and then once we get the 60 million back as an offset, then you're getting 100% of it in the future. So happy to, I mean, Roger, you could do it way better justice than I can, but effectively, that's the mechanics of the tax increment grant. As it relates to sustainability, there's a significant amount of work going on. This is a lead carbon-zero building. That means we electrified the building. And so that is how you get the status, is because that is reduced carbon in the future based on the grid versus burning gas, or coal, or whatever. So that's the way the sustainability thing works. We're happy to go into any more details there. Mentioned the TIG. I don't think I had anything else.
Was there something else on there, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell?
Yeah, there's way more, so. I think it's probably too complicated to say right now, so this would be maybe something you could, you know, help us with, or maybe the county manager would be better suited, you know, someone on your staff that can help us. I really want the visibility into the TIG, because I think it's just, I remember describing it like a Jenga game, you know, like it's all these pieces and you pull one out and the whole thing crumbles.
Just to be clear, we haven't received, we've received $0 for the TIG.
Right, and I saw that on your presentation, zero so far, but it's coming. Whoops, it's coming. And what about the sales taxes that we've already rebated? Is that part, you know, like, how are these things related? Appreciate.
Before I move to Commissioner Griffin, who's capturing all this, the questions that we need to go back to? Madam Clerk, you've got all the questions. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hillary and Blaine, thank you for your presentation. I sort of zeroed in on this education piece. You've got a lot of moving parts here with Carolina College of Health Sciences, Hawthorne, Second Award, Phillipo Berry, Olympic High, Early College at the Pearl, CPCC, Rise to Success. I'd be interested at some point in the future, kind of figure how you towel that stuff together. But my question in here would be, are you looking at, since you've been approved for a early college, have you communicated with the UNC system, or do you plan to communicate with the UNC system as relates to curriculum articulation? So if kids decide that they really enjoy this and want to get a four-year degree, that their credit would transfer? So the question would be, is there any plans to also partner with UNC system? The second piece is, you indicated that there would be an opportunity if successful students would go through your early college if they were in one of the four tracks, neurodiagnostics, nursing, radiology, healthcare. Is there a salary range today? It's going to change, of course, in the future, but is there a salary range for those four areas that those pathways reflect? And I ask that question because on this big sheet here, I don't know where it came from, you indicated that students would get $1,750, and that's $36,400. So I have no idea where this sheet came from, but the question would be, is there a salary range, or future salary range, published for those four pathways? And the final piece is, Myers on your first page, Myers that I'm familiar with is M-Y-E-R-S. So I think that was spelled wrong, unless it's a different Myers.
Yes, so I'm happy.
Don't look at me like that, Marcus.
No, no, no.
Marcus, you spelled it wrong. Yeah, please, Hillary will talk about, on the wage side, I'll hand it over to her. On the wage side, so we have a living wage, that's a base wage that we pay everybody, that's the lowest wage we pay. Marcus, currently, that is $1,750, or $18, okay. And then, and then we have in these competitive fields where, like rad, radiation tax, we need way more. There's not enough. That's part of the reason that we've brought and invested in this College of Health Sciences, this allied health, is that is a major area of weakness in the market. So there's just not enough rad tech. So we're trying to double our programs everywhere we can, as well as partnering with every single school that is training rad techs, or pharmacy techs, or lab techs around the entire state, as well as in South Carolina, because we need all that talent, because we're growing so quickly, and just this high demand, like imaging demand is much higher. Is it real, so I'm happy to talk about that. That's a carve-out, it's separate, because it's going to be higher, because it's a high demand job, MR techs, CT techs, et cetera. And actually, I have radiology as one of my areas, so it's like one of those things that we're, it's top of mind every day on the UNC schools and et cetera. Hillary, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. So we work closely with the UNC school system, as well as other programs as well. The particular program you were referencing, the early college, that's actually building on a program that was successful for us for a handful of years called Rise to Success, where students in that program originally entered as a junior. Now we're providing an opportunity for them to enter and select a pathway as a freshman over the course of their four years, receive a CNA certification and articulated credits that could be used towards other degrees, as you mentioned, with the opportunity to be placed in the roles that Colin referenced. From a job perspective right now, those four categories of job, as well as surgical tech, which is what we're trying to establish a program with Phillipo Berry around, are super high-demand areas for Atrium Health, as well as other healthcare employers in the region. The amount of students that are going through programs at places like Central Piedmont, don't, we hire all of them and they don't begin to fill, I mean, us and our other healthcare partners hire all of them and they don't begin to fill the need. So that's a little bit of the reason that we wanted to start investing in these early ages. It also, because they're doing it in high school, all of their learning is completely paid for, so they graduate with these certifications, as well as no debt and can start employment. We have pathways actually for students that start in some of these roles as well, where they can matriculate into other degrees while they're working for us in those specific roles. So there's a lot of interesting work there that we could dig into a bit further and might bring, if anyone wanted to learn more about it individually, it could bring a couple of colleagues to dive in a bit. And around the specific salary ranges for those roles, when we pull some of the information that Commissioner Altman asked for, I can pull that as part of that report that we'll send back to you guys.
The reason I ask that is I represented this board as a trustee at Central Piedmont, and it took them several years to get a matriculation agreement with the UNC system.
Yep.
So that the credit hours would transfer to the system.
Would transfer across.
So that's a little bit challenging.
Yep, yep. Great, great point.
That's a great point.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you've gotten quite a few questions, and I'll be happy with the responses that you get, but this is a project. you get, but this is a project that I've always been excited about, ever since we took the tour to the Wake Campus. And when people think about the TIG, we think about the public benefit from getting the TIG. And if you read the documents, you've certainly articulated why the TIG was important. In terms of public good, all the work you're doing with CMS and its schools, the public parking that will be available, the reduced carbon with the environment, all of these things, in my mind, benefit the public good, the number of jobs you're going to create. Just having the medical school in Mecklenburg County is significant in and of itself. I can recall for years, when we would do inner-city visits, there were two things that Charlotte didn't have, water uptown, and a medical school.
Right.
So we got the medical school, and I don't think we'll ever solve the last one. But I am just excited for what you've done, particularly around MWBE participation and awards. You've been able to track the participation, you've been able to track the amount of money that's spent. That is significant, and I don't think people really understand that. So I am confident that you'll do everything that you said you would do, given the fact that you're going to be in this community for at least 99 years. I'm just excited, I continue to be excited about what's to come. Again, this is a project that's just beginning, and so there'll be years of development, years of improvement, years of continued involvement in this community. And so I thank you for your presentation, and I thank you for what we've done thus far, and what is to come.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunlap. Thanks for the support. I will say one thing that's, you know, just to echo your comments about the kind of unintended consequences, downstream benefits for the community, what I don't want to be unseen is the impact to the local talent of the medical community. Commissioner Powell mentioned this at first, around loving the Atrium doctors, but what your cad and the medical school and this research basis create is a talent attractant magnet that is like we haven't seen before. And what this does is this puts Charlotte on the map for all these other downstream benefits.
Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think a lot of the questions that I had have been addressed, and funny enough, you just mentioned impact, and I had written down impact and outcomes, particularly, and I don't want to get too granular with asking questions, but with the jobs that Commissioner Griffin brought up, and I think the price point, starting price point was like $17.50, and I know that there's program, internship program now from high school to the mayor's office and things of that nature that starts at $23. So when we talk about filling those roles in the medical field and technology field, you know, we're so high up sometimes that I think that we get out of touch with actually what our young people, you know, planting that seed of hope to say, yes, I'm going to stay in Mecklenburg County, and yes, I want to go into this program, if it's not going to offer something that is an actual livable wage? Because here in Charlotte, $17.50 isn't a livable wage.
I'll speak to that.
Okay. And additionally, just quickly, just another question, like, for instance, choosing the student who's going to be, you know, making sure that we have the right representation, and making sure that, from the foundation, we're choosing partners that are not conversed to what we're trying to accomplish with equity diverse, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Those people that are, you know, we need to look at, do our due diligence to look at their behaviors, and not just their rhetoric, because stuff on, you know, presentation sounds good, but looking at the history and making sure that they're not working, they're working with us and not against us on that, would be, you know, encouraging. And also, making sure that we have the data, that we're setting a, that we're setting the foundation to be able to correct, collect the right data to show the impact of all of this work that's being put in with all of these moving parts, explaining that to the public, that this is the impact that it's had. And if you don't do that from the beginning, then it's kind of hard to track it and be able to say, this is the impact that it's had.
Right, that's fair. Thank you. On the living wage piece, that was actually the health system, like, across all of our hospitals. There's very few that actually are at that starting wage. On this campus, what we're talking about for those jobs, those are pipelines and higher wage jobs. So even the, a lab tech, rad tech, pharmacy tech is much higher than one of our starting food services workers who are very important, but we also create pathways for those people. So we usually have like a starter job for somebody to come in, we have environmental services workers, and we usually build a pathway where they can, there's a progress for opportunity for education, and so that we can elevate them, where they can go into central sterile processing, which is a much higher wage. So we find these pathways, we bring people in at the living wage, and we build them up, and then find other pathways based on what their interest is, et cetera. So, within the district, there's, this is, there's a higher than that, so I just wanted to clarify that living wage comment.
Yeah, the living wage is, I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's just hospital, and that's everything from what's in Cleveland County versus Charlotte's going to be a little bit different, because it's based on the, what the market is.
Understood.
Does that help? Okay.
So, I know there's some additional questions. Madam Clerk, we're going to give two minutes before we wrap this up. I'm going to start with Commissioner Altman.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, Commissioner Griffin, this document that you were asking who generated it, my understanding is it was created by staff. It is a rendition of the representations that were made in public by Atrium to the county, and what was a part of the contract that the county has with Atrium, with an update on where each of those are. That's what I believe you're looking at, and I hope it'll be put in legislature for the public to have access. You know, we have been talking, I have been talking to Atrium about the, particularly the, you know, 11,500 job total representation, 500, 5,500 onsite jobs, you know, I've been talking to people from Atrium about this since 2021. And so it is just very important to me that we receive that list of jobs that are, you expect to be coming online, when you open in August, how many per category in the salary? And I'm, I understand, obviously, that people who are getting a medical degree are going to have great upward economic mobility and will be employed. My focus is not on them, and the representations that were made for helping, this helping to close the gap for people who need to be upwardly economically mobile. So that's really what my focus is, and again, I'm looking to see a strategy that you are deploying to reach those parts of the community that are underemployed, and time to be ready to be trained for this debut in August, and for what continues to come online. I'm looking to see a strategy for advertising, job training, job opportunities, to align our community to this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you'll find that we've checked all those boxes, and we can have a follow-up conversation about that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. I love all of the language about education, the conversation about education, the conversation about pathways, because historically, they've been available to healthcare workers who wanted, like, if you were, if, just say you were working in environmental services, and you thought, I want to be, work in x-ray. You, historically, hopefully in the future, there were pathways for people, and I'm glad you're asking so many questions. I'm also glad that Colin brought up attracting talent, because when I was talking about, you know, I love the caregivers at Atrium, it's everyone. The people that are driven by love and compassion to prevent human suffering. And, you know, I love to hear George talk about all the public good benefits, and these are important, but there's also the concern of what happens when profitability becomes so huge that it's hurting people, and they're suffering from that. And so, I feel like I have to say it out loud, because, you know, when I, I was one of the people that helped open Mercy South, which is now Atrium Pineville. And I worked with many nuns, I was one of the few laypeople that worked there. And we were always so focused on patient care, and I remember Sister Catherine saying, that is our focus, you know, like, that's our whole focus here. And I never imagined I'd be in, like, you know, in a situation where, back then, where the obscene profitability is such a concern, because all we wanted, like she said, all we wanted was enough money so that we could invest to have a maternity center, like, enough profitability to have a maternity center at Atrium Pineville. So, it was really tiny back then. But, you know, it's on our minds, because it's hurting people, and so it makes it more important to make sure that the TIG is checked. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDonald?
Yeah, I'm really mindful of what this investment in the community, the downstream benefits, you know, this is truly is, you know, exciting. And I believe that those downstream benefits are real, but our revenue dip is also real, as we are in budget times right now. And so, that is why it's so important to me that, you know, the public is confident that we are really taking our jobs seriously, in making sure that the financial obligations are fulfilled, and that there's not, because there's a perception of smoke and mirrors, you know, about these taxes and things like that, there just is. And so, I can't explain what I can't see, and so, that's why I'm asking for, you know, some more information around the TIG. I think it's just, the complexity just makes it really opaque, and that's, you know, that's just hard, but, but it's not, you know, nefarious intent, you know, I'm not, I think, but I do think when you have, you know, armies of lawyers trying to wiggle out of paying taxes, you know, that's real. So, you know, the public, I believe the public wants to see the transparency in all of this, and so that's what I'm asking for, and I do really appreciate, you know, the future revenue streams that this is going to be providing, that will alleviate taxes for the public in the future. Like, I believe that's real, too. And so, this is all a balance, and so, anyways, thank you so much for being here today, and for your presentation, and for the questions that I know you'll be spending some time answering. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
Well, let me thank you for even having Myers on this document, and Jacob's ladder, and for referencing Brooklyn for where you are located. I think to really pay homage to the thousands of folk who grew up and lived in that community, and the families, to make that model work in terms of education, from schools to living wage jobs, would be the greatest honor you could, you bestow on that community where you're living. And whatever I can do to help in that process, I certainly would offer that assistance. But to make sure, as you work with elementary schools and middle schools, let the teachers know that if you're going to get a certification, you might have to take the Ts.
Right.
You might have to take this. We already know, and if you can't read, and you can't do a little computation, you're not going to get the living wage jobs, you're going to get the other jobs. So, I'd really like to hear from Hillary at some point in the future, how that those pathways are going to materialize into real opportunities for local folk, because we in migrate our talent, and so, let's make that, really pay homage and respect to that community that you're living in right now, which is the old Brooklyn, Brooklyn community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap, did you have anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to give you some time back, since you lost some.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend?
I have no additional questions, Senator. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I've just got a couple of things that I wanted to say on this. One, I want to thank my colleagues for their questions. One of the things that we realize, and Colin, I know you know this, and Hillary, I think one of the themes that came out of today, obviously, is transparency, the other is accountability. And when you think about those two words, I think we also shouldn't get lost that opportunity is what we can view this as, as well. Because I do view it as opportunity. It's an opportunity for us to maximize outcomes and the values that we always espouse, we can really maximize the priorities that we have as a board, if we do this right. And so, we definitely, I want to say we appreciate the partnership as it relates to this project. I mean, this project is, it means so much to the community on a lot of different levels, from a historic perspective, from a perspective that will allow this idea of economic mobility to take place, opportunity is an education component, workforce development component, it's an opportunity for everyone in this community to really maximize opportunity. And so that's exactly what we're seeing today. I think it's important for you all to follow up with board members, so that we can dig deeper, to be able to provide and make those, and have those answers for our constituents, and so that we can be transparent. I think this was, and is, a solid start, and one of the things that I think will be important to the board is for us to understand when we'll get the information back. Let's collect that data, all of the questions, get them out, let's have a time certain to get that information back. Also, I would ask for the opportunity, again, for you all to reach out to board members, you know this, you've heard the specific concerns or the specific questions, to really drill down on that. I do want to put in the public space that, from a community perspective, there were questions from Reverend Garner Mullins and Dr. Biddle Patton that we did discuss, or I've had the opportunity to discuss, so I wanted to make sure that that was in the public sphere, where they know we're trying to address those issues. Those are my direct constituents with respect to District Four, so I wanted to make sure that that was out, because they lifted that up. But I think all the questions that were raised were inbounds. I think the perspectives that Commissioner Dunlap in particular, and Commissioner Griffin raised were, also, should be kept on the radar. So with that, I think we have our marching orders. I think, again, there's opportunity, but we have a long way to go. Yes?
Can I just ask, because you mentioned them reaching out to individual commissioners about their questions, usually when we're asking questions of our staff, staff answers all commissioners, because we have the question.
So let me clarify, thank you for that, Commissioner. So, I was not saying not to give answers where there would be, where it would be visible to everyone, I wanted them to gather, but there were, I guess, specific points of interest among commissioners that I thought would be valuable, if they were able to take commissioners and address those specific, like, everybody may not be interested in digging deep into the TIG portion, so for you, it may take some additional time with Roger and team, so you could really drill down on that. Commissioner Altman is, it really wants to drill down on workforce, and making sure those connections are there. So, just to clarify, please send responses to all of the questions, but I'm encouraging you to reach out to individual commissioners, to make sure that they can drill down and dig deep into. drill down and dig deep into their areas, specific areas of concern.
Because I like them to landscape with native plants.
I'm sorry? What'd you say?
I would like for them to landscape with native plants.
And get with Daniel Levine.
I'm serious.
I know you're serious. I know you are. But thank you all for being here today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Manager, we'll turn it over to you for the next one.
Real quick, can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
If, yeah, it's on. If anyone would like a tour, or if we want to structure some options for tours that makes sense prior to the opening, which would not be public, but we would like for everyone to have the opportunity to see it prior to opening, otherwise it's gin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we raise our hands?
Yes, yes.
We can coordinate with board support to have you. Christine, can you help coordinate with board support to schedule a tour for the board members to go to visit the Pearl? Thank you. Okay, the next item under our agenda today is an update, or actually, a budget priority report from the Women's Advisory Board. This is the process that we do with our budget each year, asking our advisory boards, or your advisory boards, to come forward with their budget priorities for the next fiscal year. So this lovely lady will introduce herself and provide a sort of report for the Women's Advisory Board.
Good afternoon. Happy Tuesday, Commissioners, County Managers, County Attorneys, and County Executives. I am Denaywa Denise, and I have the utmost honor to present as the Women's Advisory Board Chair our presentation. We are honored to present before you guys. Again, I believe this will be our fifth year in assisting in identifying priorities that we have discovered as an advisory board, that we believe that would be important in you all when you're considering allocating taxpayer funds for the fiscal 2026 year. Our board is typically composed of 15 members representing different districts of the county. Currently, at the end of 2024, we had a couple of that tenured out, so we have five vacancies available. The data that is going to be presented within this presentation, the data, the data that's in this presentation was pulled from reports given to us by the county along with national data. During our retreat in November, we took the data from the county reports, along with the national, national data, along with our involvement in the community experience, and we created priorities to represent today. All right, so the specific ones that we came up with was access to healthcare and childcare, women entrepreneurship, accessible housing and transitional shelters, enhancing education and training opportunities, and mental health resources. We decided to break our presentation into two portions, which would be our findings along with our recommendation. So in regards to childcare access, it was determined that 66% of children under the age of six in North Carolina lived in households with parents that worked, which really underlines the need for accessible childcare. At this time, childcare is about 40% of medium income, which really highlights the significant affordability challenges. And then in regards to healthcare, 15% of residents aged 19 to 64 lacked health insurance, which also limited their essential healthcare services. With this, we're, our recommendations, we wanted to focus on four areas. The first area is increasing the already established childcare subsidy fund and streamlining the eligibility for that. The idea is to open it up for not only just low income, but also middle income, just because there's that big portion that parents are paying towards childcare. In regards to support, we thought of offering grants or maybe tax incentives to businesses to provide outside childcare to, or maybe potentially childcare stipends, and encourage public-private partnerships to establish workplace-based childcare centers. Things to consider would be expanding the pre-K access and continuing to supporting funding in North Carolina's pre-K accommodations to gain access to more eligible children in Mecklenburg. And then finally, creating a multitask agency that can improve a couple of different items, such as mental health reproductive rights and chronic disease prevention, while leveraging partnerships with healthcare providers to solidify that. All right, so for, for entrepreneurship, there is economic, economic inequality in regards to women over the age of 18 that are living in poverty. Something that really, that's really good in North Carolina is women-owned businesses are very, very successful, as we hold 44.2% across North Carolina. In 2023, North Carolina was ranked the second-best state for U.S. women-owned businesses, trailing behind New York. And then lastly, in 2023, there was a lot of women-owned firms that really generated a lot of income upwards of $2.7 trillion in sales. So what that shows is, if women are given the opportunity to create business, then they do. And our recommendations in regards to that is to expand programs such as the Business Launchpad to, to continue to empower women in their businesses. Also, expanding small business incubators for women, as well as accelerator programs that can include mentorships, networking, office space for those entrepreneurs. And then lastly, providing funding for digital and financial literacy with partnerships that are already in existence, like CPCC. In regards to accessible and transitional housing, the previous presentation kind of touched on this a little bit. So what we know right now, in regards to renting, like, a two-bedroom, that on average a person would need at least $25.21 per hour to be able to afford that. With minimum wage being at $7.25, that person would have to work 139 hours per week just to sustain housing, and that's nothing more. 25% of the renters' households in North Carolina are considered incredibly low-income. And then as regards to our unsheltered and homelessness, that has increased 33% since 2023, which is really, really high. Currently, North Carolina ranks 38th nationally in the percentage of women that are living in poverty, with a highlight of Hispanic, Native American, and Black women leading that. In terms of housing instability, women, specifically single mothers, are more disproportionately affected by housing, as 30% of their income goes to housing. And then that last little bit there, it talks more about the children that are aging out of foster care systems. If there's not affordable housing, they tend to have a harder time and end up unhoused as well. So the recommendations in, in terms of that would be, continue the funding that is already there for nonprofits that specialize in women's housing, and strengthen those partnerships, creating housing programs that really focus on trauma-informed tactics in regards to people that are returning back to the workforce, but specifically for those that were in domestic violence situations, incarceration, or being released from mental health services or facilities. And then also leveraging county-owned land for affordable housing to continue to utilize county-owned properties for housing developments. In regards to enhanced education and job training, while women in Mecklenburg County represent over half of unemployment insurance in population, we are 52%, which really shows that there's a big gap in those that are unemployed and are women. So industries like education, healthcare services, leisure, and hospitality, which are predominantly female staff, have really seen a lot of layoffs in unemployment amongst women. So the recommendation in that regard is to continue to support pre-apprenticeship programs like She Built This City, in fields that are typically male-dominated, like tech, construction, and electricity, to partner with reentry programs for women that are returning to work after caregiving, incarceration, or domestic violence, and also providing job placement for career coaching and other vital services. And then we are aware that you all have programs already for job training, but maybe highlighting and lifting those up a little bit more, so people are aware that those programs exist through DSS and the libraries. For mental health, one in four women has been diagnosed with depressive disorder. And then the CDC studies show that one in 10 women reported an episode of major depression within the last year. And three in five teen girls are felt sad and hopeless. And we see that a lot of that is based off financial barriers, accessibility challenges, and stigmas surrounding mental health, so they're less likely to go and receive help. So our recommendations are to continue to support facilities like the Behavior Health Urgent Care, and then also bring more wellness, more awareness to the Met Hope, and continue the language expansion to include more languages, expanding partnerships to co-locate mental health providers, such as therapists, counselors within the community, and provide that access to the nonprofits that partner with the county already, providing funding for social works and mental health professionals at CMS, and also explore the pipeline program with local colleges to recruit clinicians and social workers for the county. This is a picture of us at our last event in August. I'm sorry, I feel like I sped through that. But do you have any questions?
Well, thank you so much. I know that there will be questions. Great presentation. We'll start with Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Denaywa, right?
It's Denaywa.
Denaywa, sorry.
No worries.
Thank you for your presentation. That was fantastic. I really loved y'all's priorities that you had from the very start. And I love the recommendations that you guys are bringing forward throughout. And I just wanted to highlight two things. One is, you guys have five vacant seats.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do, do we know, well, maybe we could find out if we have a bunch of applicants or if we're, like, dried up on applicants. Does anyone, do you just know off the top of your head?
They're actually coming on the next meeting.
Okay, so there are applicants.
So there are applicants, yes.
Okay, okay. This is such a great board. And the reason why I love this board is because y'all are very, very thoughtful. And I really appreciate the, the way you guys have been doing your presentations for the last couple of years. It's been really good. And I just want to put out there that, you know, somebody from this group needs to run for office, okay? So y'all should be thinking about that, because just of the way that your presentation flowed, it really made me think that, you know, you might have some good candidates there. So, so thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap, do you have anything?
Sure, I'll, I'll say something. No, really, Susan said it. You guys have done really an outstanding job in your presentations, much different than when we first started this. So I appreciate that. Couple of things. And I think one of your first slides, you gave a statistic of people between the age of 19 and 64.
Yes, sir.
That's a wide range.
It's big, right?
It's big.
But it exists.
It, it does, but maybe we can narrow the focus. And, and, and what I'm, what I'm asking for is, we have a focus on seniors. And I think if any group, that group ought to be singled out. So if you could talk about what's happening with the senior population, and not kind of lump them in with, with what's happening with the young people. I want to ask Kirk one thing. Is it possible that the committee could review applicants before they come before us? And I ask that question because sometimes people make a reference to people they've met, encountered, people they'd like to see based on their background, and I don't know if they've had that opportunity or not. So is that possible? And then the other thing I'd like to see is a response to their concerns, because many of the things that they are asking us to do, we're currently doing. And I'd love for them to see the work that we're already doing in this space.
Okay, so we do, when we get applicants, we do forward them so that they can review. As far as what we do is, as long as they have the minimum requirements, we pass them, them on. So that's, that's the, the extent of our review. And then we will give them and say, do you have, for recommendations.
Yes.
So we do do that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Townsend-Egger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, your, your presentation was really good. And what it actually did, it was so good, it just sparked more and more and more questions that I wanted to drill down on. Impact of the housing opportunities for pregnant, so it occurs to me, you know, the maternity mortality rate for Black women is so much significantly higher. So do we have any statistics that talk about housing as it relates to pregnant Black women, and how that impacts, one impacts the other likewise? With regard to seniors, as Commissioner Dunlap mentioned, because we have that as a priority, you know, if they're unhoused, then they're likely unfed. And we just had a presentation on environmental stewardship about our housing insecure, excuse me, food insecurity, and how that has impacted in certain, concentrated in certain areas, and how we're doing that. So if they don't have a home, then they're not getting fed.
Right.
So knowing how many seniors we have that are in that predicament that we're missing, because I talked about filling in those gaps, we need to know where the gaps are. And that, to me, seems like it would be a really hu- huge gap. Unhoused, as well as those who are aging out of foster care, that was another thing that was huge for me when I used to work at Johnson C. Smith, worked with that program consistent, considerably, is those, those that are, because if, if we're reporting numbers that are this high, then it's likely there are numbers that we're missing, and that's a gap, right? If we don't know about them to count them, then we can't count them. So the numbers are probably higher. So if, I, I would just love to see the number of seniors and the number of Black pregnant women that are unhoused or don't have adequate health insurance. And I know that we, we track that, too, but those are two particular areas, and, and the seniors, that I'm really concerned about. I will note that I went to, just for everybody concerned, since it's Women's History Month, I went to Habitat for Humanity, had a wall raising for two homes in my district, District 2, where I live, and 37% of the workforce in construction were women. I mean, there were women supervisors, they were out there giving direction and instruction. I was so empowered and inspired by that. So just a little positive note as to all of this gloom and doom, but especially with the employment numbers. That's, that's sobering.
That is. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I don't have the specific numbers, but I definitely can look into it. I know that we met with Creightonton, the house, and I know that they elevate, they elevated a lot of that, especially because they have the age where the
That's not for you.
Where the people, they age out essentially. And so they created another branch where I believe it goes up to 25 or 26, but then after that, it's like, where do I go? And if there's not anything strong employment-wise, you're kind of in a space of that transition. So I will definitely look deeper into that for seniors and Black pregnant women, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you, or Dina, whoever put these presentations together. The Pearl presentation and this wonderful presentation we just had, for me, goes back-to-back in terms of opportunities to address some of the issues that were presented on, on this presentation. The, the federal government, HUD, is, is no longer building public housing. So all of the wonderful recommendations and, and needs that were, findings were, were identified in this presentation, just makes, for me, we have to double down on upward mobility. So all of the wonderful recommendations and needs that were findings were identified in this presentation just makes, for me, we have to double down on upward mobility to help our community residents get the skills and opportunities to take advantage of those jobs that are coming online throughout the community. But with our partners at Atrium in developing the Pearl, it just seems like hand in glove for me that here's an opportunity that we can work more diligently to make dreams come true for a lot of folk. And healthcare clearly seems to be an area, I wish I had thought enough during the early presentation to ask if the Pearl was going to provide childcare on site. But still, we have to make sure that our residents get an opportunity to receive a living wage and an opportunity to provide for their families. So thanks for whoever put these two presentations back to back. Thank you for your presentation and your findings and recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you add that question to the list of the Atrium questions, please? Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I have the worst seat to be able to see people at the ponyhoof. Help me with this because it jumped right out at me. And public information is here and listening. You asked, a recommendation is to continue to create more awareness for MECC Hope. A rapid rehousing for victims of domestic violence is extremely important to this board. So how do you think we could create more awareness? Because, I mean, even the other night I saw a commercial, like, how can we do better?
I think really letting people know the things that are available. From the time that I've spent in the community, talking to other people, a lot of times they just don't know that is there. So yes, you might see a commercial, but really having potentially advocates that can go out into these different spaces, these nonprofits, to just speak to what's available. Because a lot of times, people don't know what they don't know. And a lot of word of mouth really isn't thing. Because if I know something, I'm going to be like, hey, girl, you can do this, or this might be available too. So I think that being more intentional about getting information out in different ways, that way collectively, we can help each other as a community.
And maybe, you know, maybe we could do more of it through, I don't know the answer. That's why I need everybody's brain. But, you know, there's so many patients that are hospitalized and, you know, who leave and go back to, and so however we can partner with Atrium and Navant to give the MECC Hope number for when they decide that they're ready to reach out. And I know you feel the same, like, I'm deeply troubled that people wait until they're in such a situation that it's so bad. And then they, they're desperate. And so how do we? I really appreciate that you have this here, this recommendation.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
And, you know, brainstorm with your advisory board because I'd like to hear more about how we can do better. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So let me just wrap this up by just saying, I personally thought this was an outstanding presentation.
It's my first one. Thank you.
Well, I thought it was outstanding, actually. You know, there were a couple of things that really jumped out at me. Really understanding and grounding us in what your key priorities are as a board. It really helped me go through this presentation. The other thing that I thought you really did extremely well was helping us understand the findings. And your findings just weren't abstract, right? I felt like the, you know, your findings were really grounded and rooted in things that can impact the folks that we are very concerned about. And so your key priorities, your findings, and then you made the recommendations, really aligned with the board's goals, the board's priorities as well. And I saw real intentionality in that. So I wanted to lift that up and let you know that, I think you could tell by the feedback, how much we appreciate that. And so to the extent that, you know, you can continue to give us information, to give us feedback on how our priorities are aligning and really trying to lift this population up. And just so you know, a lot of the areas really connect with where we are. And we are intentional about actually adding goals and targets around some of our priorities as well. So hopefully, we'll see some beneficial outcomes that really will impact the population that you all are concerned about. So thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely.
Outstanding job.
I appreciate it. I will say that I absolutely love this city. I love Charlotte. And we have a board that really, really loves Charlotte, too. So we spend a lot of time talking about what can make it better. We go to community events, like, it's not just we sit once a month. Like, we, like, I'm, the library has a Ramadan event, I'm participating in it. So we're really, like, involved. So I appreciate the feedback. Thank you all. I hope you have a great afternoon.
Oh, we can tell you have a great afternoon as well. Thank you so much. I think we got one more, Dina.
We have one more advisory report. We're going to hear from Peter McGrath and Leslie Rhodes on the Air Quality Commission's budget recommendations for FY '26. Good to see you both.
It's nice to see you as well. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. I'm Leslie Rhodes, the Air Quality Director for Mecklenburg County Air Quality. And this team that I lead is a division of Louisa Land Use and Environmental Services. And we are one of three, only three certified local air quality programs within the state of North Carolina. And our mission is to lead and assist Mecklenburg County towards meeting and maintaining the federal health-based national ambient air quality standards. And we do this by improving air quality, measuring air pollution, and importantly, listening and responding to residents, businesses, and community partners here in Mecklenburg County and around the state. I'm here to introduce to you today Peter McGrath, who I did want to mention, this month is the 10th anniversary of his appointment as Chair to the Air Quality Commission, which is your Citizen Advisory Board. So you are in good hands as he presents the advisory board's budget priorities to you this afternoon. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie, and thanks Chairman Darrell, members of the board, Manager DiOrio, Clerk's Office. That was a quick 10 years. And thanks for the opportunity to present our budget priorities to you. The, our charter authorizes us to do a lot of things, but it requires us to do only a few. And one of those is to make our annual report to you, which we'll do later on this year. But another step that we are required to do by our charter is to advise you on how to make, how to make sure that Mecklenburg County maintains a certified, as Leslie mentioned, local air quality program. And I don't want to get into a big law school discussion of this, but basically what that means is, most of the air quality statutes and regulations and rules that govern air quality in Mecklenburg County are federal. And they are, in the primary instance, enforced and implemented by the federal EPA. The EPA can delegate that authority to implement its own regulations to a state, and it has delegated authority to North Carolina to run the federal program in North Carolina. And North Carolina has further redelicated that authority to Mecklenburg County. So all federal air pollution law in Mecklenburg County is implemented and run by Mecklenburg County. And it's been the goal of the county to make sure that we keep that authorization in perpetuity. So today, our first priority for the budget is to make sure that funding is adequate for Mecklenburg County air quality to ensure that the local certification will continue in the next fiscal year. We've had discussions with Leslie about the budget request that she will make as part of Louisa's budget. And we are confident that her budget request will allow for continued certification of the local air quality program. So our first priority is to ask you to carefully consider that budget request and to grant it when it comes before you. We have two other priorities that are kind of related. The first is that we ask that the board and the county manager's office allocate funding to Leslie's division to ensure that the diversity of the staff mirrors the diversity of the community that it serves. And our final priority is to consider increasing funding to Mecklenburg County air quality to ensure and expand outreach to the community, especially environmental justice frontline communities. I think we've mentioned this to the board before. We believe that air quality across the county is fairly uniform and homogeneous. We don't believe there are pockets of good air quality and pockets of bad air quality in Mecklenburg County. We do also believe, though, that awareness of air quality issues and information about air quality is not evenly distributed across the county. So when we're talking about this outreach, especially to what we call environmental justice frontline communities, we're talking about expanding education and outreach activities to those areas of the county where we believe information to and access to and awareness of air quality issues is not as great as it is in other parts of the county. We also know, though, that a not insignificant portion of MACAC's funding comes from federal grants. So we understand that if those priorities are taken into account, the board, the county manager, Leslie, and the Air Quality Commission will have to monitor diversity efforts and outreach efforts to ensure compliance with federal law and policy so that we don't jeopardize any of that federal funding. Speaking personally, and this is Peter McGrath talking, not necessarily the AQC, I am concerned that, to the extent any federal funding had been available for those kinds of efforts in the past, it will not be as available in the future. Those are our priorities. Again, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you, and I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Peter, and congratulations on 10 years. I'm going to start, of course, with Commissioner Powell. You knew I was coming to you first.
Well, just thank you for your commitment, your dedication and commitment for a decade.
I was remiss in not thanking you because we've had great support, and I know there's great concern on this board for air quality issues. So thank you for that.
Yes. I was thinking, like, what happens when somebody thinks about taking funding away from air quality? Like, that's a scary world I don't want to live in. But, you know, and thank you for having the mindfulness of saying this is Peter McGrath speaking, not the board. Because, you know, sometimes I see advisory boards, like, they speak for the whole board, and the board didn't even know they were speaking. So I appreciate that.
You really try to avoid that.
I call with every question I have, so I don't have any questions, I just have gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go Commissioner Dunlap.
Well, thank you. As always, it is good to know that we're following the rules. Do have two or three questions. And I think you started down the road. First, I want to understand, even though these are federal mandates that you're carrying out, so does the federal government give money to the state? Does the state add additional dollars? Or do we only get the federal dollars?
I'll turn that over to Leslie for specific funding questions, with your permission.
Yes, thank you for the question. We receive federal grants through the U.S. EPA. We also receive a portion of the gasoline tax in North Carolina from the state. And then we collect fees for permitting and compliance services within the county.
Okay. And so based on all of the executive orders that have been signed, are there any eliminations or rollback on dollars that we're currently receiving?
None of our current grants have been rescinded or are currently frozen, and we are continuing to draw down those federal funds.
Thank you.
That's the good news.
Great. Commissioner Griffin.
Anyone that serves for 10 years has got to be thanked, so I really appreciate your service.
It has been a really pleasant opportunity for the past 10 years. I'm very honored to do it.
Thank you for your commitment. Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so I was just wondering, when you said that the implementation about, you know, is through the county, that's not just Mecklenburg, right? That's the whole state? Is the whole state treated the same way? Or is it something unique?
The state of North Carolina is authorized to implement the federal clean air programs in North Carolina. And for three counties, the state has further redeligated that authority. So three counties run their own programs, and 97 counties are run by the state. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, totally makes sense. That's really interesting. I didn't know that. So thank you for teaching us that. I really appreciated your points about ensuring that the diversity of staff matches the community. Thank you all for being mindful of that. And I think it's interesting that you talked about that the air quality is equal across the county, but the education of air quality is maybe not equal.
Right.
And your concern about federal funding, I do share because, just because it's there now doesn't mean it's going to be there tomorrow. We know there's a lot of impulsivity going on. So appreciate your entire advisory board, and of course, you as the leader of it.
We have a great board.
And please pass that on to the members.
I will, I will. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Well, Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell took the two things that I was going to say with regard to the diversity and making sure that that's equitable with relegated to the community. But just thinking about the education portion, and thank you also for your service. I also think 10 years is amazing. With regard to the education, do we have any kind of reciprocal MOUs with maybe Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools or any of the colleges to teach that so that they can understand the importance of air quality to, like, for, you know, what you hear in the community is that, you know, the most marginalized groups, like African Americans, don't understand how air quality contributes to their health and health disparities. So helping them to understand that, they may understand how critically important it is to vote the right people in office and to have these educational programs.
And I would say we don't have any formal memorandums of understanding with CMS or any of the universities. But we do work with them continually. And one change in kind of outreach that I'd like to mention, and Leslie, you can tell me if I overstate this or not, but one thing we've learned, and you mentioned Reverend Garner Mullins earlier, this is one thing I think we've really learned from her, is instead of Mecklenburg County air quality going out to a particular community and saying, we're going to hold this event to teach you about air quality, what we will try and do is partner with community associations or schools and say, if you're having an event in the next month, we would like to come to it and speak a little bit about air quality. So that there's an audience already, we don't have to create the audience, there's an audience there already. And the other thing that we've learned that we're trying to emphasize is to make sure that the communities understand that we're not there to, we're not coming there to saying we want to fix your problems. We want you to tell us what we can do for you. That's kind of a change in emphasis in the past couple of years, that we want you to tell us what you think you need us to do.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner Alvin.
Thank you so much. I unfortunately had to miss part of this presentation, so I just want you to know I appreciate everything you do, and I will be going back and listening to it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Peter, again, 10 years?
10 years.
Wow. Fantastic. So just want you to know how much we appreciate, every time you come, really appreciate it. I think since I've been serving on the board, the focus on diversity and justice has not gone unnoticed.
Good.
Definitely appreciate that, your openness and willingness to be out in the community and to rethink the way we engage. That is really important. And Leslie, you know I think you're a superstar. So you know, I appreciate your leadership without question in what you brought to the table and, you know, for always being able to answer those questions and drill down into the community, which is so important to us as board members. So I want to just thank you both and, you know, everybody who's
Her staff is remarkably talented. It's just really amazing.
Exactly. That's well said, and thank you for that. So thank you for being here today.
Thanks for having me. Thank, thanks for having us.
Think that's it, huh? All right. All right. Well, colleagues, we're going to move to commissioner reports. Madam Clerk, we're going to stay with the tradition of three minutes, and we're going to start with Commissioner Townsend-Ingram.
I actually just noted what I wanted to say earlier about how, you know, since this is Women's History Month and giving some of the disparaging numbers that we hear frequently about, you know, disparities in pay and things of that nature, and jobs, and housing, and all of the above, the fact that 37% of Habitat for Humanities Construction team are women, and I was able to go out there and see it, like, a vast majority of them, the site supervisors are, like, there were so many women, and I was so impressed with that. So impressed with that, and hopefully we can get some more of that done. I, I, I know how difficult it is, but the partnerships with religious institutions is working really, really well. I saw it, I see it, I've been seeing it quite frequently, and I appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually, I have, I'm not organized enough today to give my commissioner report. Darn it.
Want me to come back?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just have no report today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
I want to bring this up in case Dina or anyone knows the answer. I've gotten two calls from two different mayors that I, you know, that I represent about difficulties experienced by arts, arts organizations that haven't, the delay in receiving any funding that they were anticipating through the Foundation for the Carolinas has caused people to be, I don't know what to call it, laid off? Yeah, they had to get rid of staff because of the delay in the payments. And so I was just on the telephone before I came in here with another concern about it. So if we can, maybe, I don't know if you know the answer now, or if you could look into that?
No, I know the answer. So the Arts and Science Council CEO has met with all of the arts organizations in the north, and the one that I think you're referring to is the Raptor Center that said they had to lay people off. But when they met with the Raptor Center, the Raptor Center did not communicate that. So I don't know who is saying that, but the Raptor Center has not indicated that. That's the first thing. The second thing is the contracts are making their way through the foundation legal department, and they are supposed to be to the organizations this week.
So I'm also getting phone calls about different organizations that haven't had any contact about the process for getting, getting some arts funding.
Can you provide the information so I can follow up on that?
Yeah. And I didn't know if it was universal, like if everyone was hearing this, or if it's just me. And, and so I brought that up. And then I've spent a lot of time on, Commissioner Dunlap knows, I spent a lot of time in the past few weeks because there's a lot of concern about the Lake Norman Marine Commission and some changes that some people want to make. So there, there's like three different groups of people that want some changes. And so if you hear about that, we're working on it to make sure that we get community input and expert input on how, how we can do it better. And I just wanted to let you know because, you know, transparency matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin.
Transparency matters. Just want to lift up the passing of Bishop Battle. I served with him on the Board of Education for a number of years, if you haven't already heard that. He passed recently. And so just want to make sure that my colleagues were aware of that. The second piece is, I don't usually do this, but the Community Support Services that supports the Women's Advisory Board continues to do a great job. And the more I drill down into the organization, I learn a lot more. But that presentation and, and all of the support came from the Community Support Services. So just want to lift that up for that, that team.
Maybe you should ask them to stand.
Say what? Stand, all right, stand so we... Thank you. The other piece, and I'm glad that some other folk are here, the presentation from, from Atrium and the Pearl about workforce opportunities. And Dean, I'm not sure how to communicate this back to Colin and Hillary. If we could figure out how to get an MOU through a MEC success or other workforce development programs to see if we could participate to some degree with some of our residents that are going through our program. And I saw Yolanda Griffin over there, but I, I go to you, Dina, to see, that ship may have sailed and we can't participate, but if there is any room for us to participate, that would be great, since they've reaching out to Centripede Mine, they're creating their own early college and a whole lot of other pathways to get, get trained for those jobs. That would be phenomenal in terms of upward mobility for us. So they are a partner of ours, and I would be hopeful that, that opportunity might make itself available in the future as it relates to training and job opportunities with, with the Pearl. That's all I have, Mr., Mr. Chairman. Thank you for giving me the opportunity, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap.
No report, but I do want to bring your attention to something that Elaine mentioned about the Marine Commission. I served on the Marine Commission when I first got on the board, and I, I think sometimes we fail to understand just how important that commission is, especially as it relates to water quality. And I don't know, did you tell them that one of the counties wanted to pull out?
And so there's been discussion about if, you know, in the future, if one county wants to pull out. So Lake Norman has four counties around it. There's been discussion, recommendation even, that if one county pulls out, it's disbanded. So I sent my response, I forwarded it to you so you could see, because I, I don't believe in that. I believe we should have conflict resolution, mediation, something built into the bylaws that says, like, work it out, because without a Marine Commission, it impacts everything, water quality, safety, all the buoy placement. And so it is a very important commission. And so there's lots of conversation happening, and I feel very strongly about that myself, but there is disagreement. And so that's to answer you, Commissioner Dunlap. There's disagreement about it, but I'm, I, I feel strongly, we can't back down on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Alvin.
No report.
Okay. I don't necessarily have a report, but I would like to get, do a little bit of cleanup and just go over a couple of things, just to level set. One, I just want to thank all of you all as colleagues, even the ones that are not here, Commissioner Meyer and Commissioner Leek. The vice chair organized some small groups, and I want to thank Deputy County Manager Trotman and Johnson for being a part of the small groups. The goals of the small groups have been for us to be able to come together, based on the presentation that we saw, Michael, that came out of our priority-setting sessions. We wanted to do something that we have not done before as a board. That was to establish SMART goals. Michael and staff came back with multiple options within those priority buckets, and there was a plethora of options. Obviously, we're not going to establish SMART goals around 10 different items. I mean, we need one or two, if any. We don't, we don't have to have one in every single priority area, but where it makes sense. So the goal of those sessions have been to, one, whittle that list down to see what are the areas of commonality that we think we should, we're, we're already tracking, these are areas that staff tracks, but where do we want to establish SMART goals, targets? And so we needed to whittle those down. So that's the purpose of the smaller groups, to be able to have those discussions, to get feedback, hey, this is my option one, option two, and so on and so forth. So I want to thank the vice chair for organizing that and, and helping us to work through that. And so as we go through the, the sessions, I just wanted to make sure that, and, and just wanted to say, thank you for your patience, thank you for being positive. It is not something that I want us as a board to rush. I don't think it should be rushed. I think it should be done right. We do have our priorities, and we've established those priorities. There's some tweaks that we went through before with some language, and I think Commissioner Griffin has submitted maybe some additional language around education that, that we will consider. But as far as the SMART goals, we all agree that that was something we wanted to do, and I am committed to us getting through that process, but it is not going to be rushed. I just want to be very, very clear, we need to, we need to do it right. We all will not get what we want, but we will make decisions, and it will make sense to the community. That's got to be the ultimate goal. And again, I, I want to continue to say, it is just a start, and so where we are today is not where we'll be next year. We'll be able to build off this process, but I want everybody to know, we're building the house right now. We're, we're building the plane now. And again, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you very much for, for being patient, for being positive, and, you know, let's continue to have those discussions. And I wanted to just thank Michael for leading us through the process as well. Also, just want to make sure that before we leave today, just put your orders in, make sure you get them to the clerk, we know what that's about, and we will also be sending you some information that'll be pertinent to this later on. With that being said, I am done, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, ayes have it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. All right. And...[1734.63]